Evening and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Not only is it a beautiful, beautiful evening in Garner, but we have some wonderful things to celebrate this evening and a little bit of work to do. So we'll just jump right in tonight. Let's see, we're going to start with our Town Attorney calling the roles.
Thank you. Mayor Gupton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kathy Behringer will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I have invited Reverend Miles Hunt to come and give our invocation tonight. I have known Miles' parents for decades and have had the privilege of watching him grow up and develop into the young man, the minister that he is today. And it's my privilege, my pleasure to invite him to give our invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, as we gather this day as stewards of our shared life in this community, we thank you for the gift of this town and the people who call it home. As we begin our meeting, we ask for your wisdom and presence among us to guide our conversations and decisions that we might always hold the well-being of our citizens at heart, especially the most vulnerable among us, the poor and the elderly, the sick and the marginalized and the overlooked. Grant us courage to lead with justice and humility to listen with care and the resolve to serve with integrity. We lift up those who labor quietly and faithfully for the common good, the teachers and school staff, the librarians who shape the minds and hearts of the next generation, public servants and first responders and volunteers and caregivers. May we support them with policies and resources that reflect our shared values, placing the common interests above our own. Let this meeting be a place of respect, collaboration, and hope that together we might continually build a community marked by equity, dignity, and peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is petitions and comments, and I'll ask our Town Attorney if anyone has signed up to speak in this portion.
No one signed up for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, well, we do have some other public hearings later on. We may have some folks signed up for there to speak at those, so this might be a good point to just remind everyone, we do have the three-minute limit. You can, Mike can see the little timer on the podium there. We can see it here, so we'll be courteous to our friends and neighbors when we get to that point. At this point, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Most of you have seen it there. The council members have looked at it. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Vance, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We have several, a couple of presentations that are on the agenda, but there's a couple that have occurred so recently, we had to write them in, and they're unscripted, but I'll try to hit these noteworthy things. You may have seen on local television news about a fire out at Eagle Ridge last night. Terrible fire destroyed a really nice home over there. Fortunately, no serious injuries. A few firefighters had some minor injuries involved, but no civilians were injured. But this was an example of where our fire department, our fire and rescue overwhelmingly responded, got help from one or two of our neighbor fire departments, and just did a tremendous job of keeping it under control and not turning into a neighborhood disaster. The more, even more exciting part of this was the response of their neighbors. If you saw the news coverage, most of it was about how the neighbors responded with efforts to help, raise money, and help the family that was afflicted by this. Just another example of where Garner is a place that we know our neighbors and help each other. So that was a real testimonial. And late-breaking news as of today, our very own council member Kathy Behringer, surprised, don't act surprised, you were surprised this morning.
I was surprised this morning.
At the Women's Conference put on by the Chamber of Commerce, which has turned into a really big deal. They made the annual award of Woman of the Year, and that was Kathy Behringer. Thank you. That was a great, great accomplishment. Thank you. And a little, and if you read the paper at all or watch the news, you might have seen that Garner has been named in the top ten fastest-growing cities and towns in the United States. Not the ten fastest-growing in Wake County or North Carolina or the South. In the United States, we're the tenth fastest-growing town or city over twenty thousand. That's a lot of competition. It is really staggering. And this was the U.S. Census Bureau putting that in. It made me think of a speaker we heard at the League of Municipalities Conference a couple of weeks ago was our governor, Phil Stein, and he said, "We all learned from the movies a couple of decades ago that if you build it, they will come." He said, "What we've discovered here lately is if you don't build it, they still come." And they're coming in droves, and they're coming here to Wake County, and it's our turn in the rotation now. I was at the Wake County Governor, the Wake County Mayor's Association last night with the other eleven towns and one city that are in Wake County. And I said, "Some of you guys have had this before or something like this, and in the next year or two, it will be another one of you who's doing this where we're past our little spurt of recognition." But this is a booming, booming place. If you are in Wake County or central North Carolina in the twenty-first century, your life is changing. And it's our job and all of your job to do this in a prudent and thoughtful manner, grow with reason and stay ahead of it, and that's what this council has been doing for a number of years, what our staff has been working hard at for decades to make this happen in an orderly way. Because even if you don't build it, they still come, and we got to do our best to control it and manage this growth. So hats off to everybody involved there. And last but not least, I want to refer again to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Several of us, including some staff, were at their conference a couple of weeks ago, and they represented to us the recognition of our Commit to Civility program. They started this up to help councils make sure everybody was being effective and efficient, as well as very courteous and civil in all of their dealings, and they awarded us this wonderful plaque. And the good news is, I'm not going to read it, and the other good news is, we won't have a photo op. We had a photo op when we all walked up on the stage and got it, and our Town Attorney had the laborious job of carrying it down the steps and back over here safely. So thank you. But my hat is off to our council and our staff who helped us undergo this training program. It just reminded all of us that we can disagree without being disagreeable. We're always courteous, I think, to our real bosses, you, the taxpayers. Sometimes we're courteous to the staff, but we have to remember that they are working hard, and all of us owe them a debt of gratitude on this too. We want to keep it civil, and we can get together in small groups when it's not as civil, but maybe not out here. So those were some of the big things, but even more exciting, we have a special presentation this evening, the Introduction of Miss Garner Twenty Twenty Five. And I believe we have a special presenter, Mr. Larry Williams.
Phillips.
Phillips, thank you. I can read sometimes. Larry Phillips, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, tell us a little bit and introduce our special guest this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Phillips. I am a volunteer with the Miss Garner Organization. You all know that Miss Garner Organization has been going on for more than sixty years, and we've had many great Miss Garners and Miss North Carolinas come out of, and placers at Miss America come out of Garner. I want to also thank the Town of Garner for the support that we get. We're a volunteer organization, and we have to have support in the community, and Garner's been really good to us. The Town of Garner's been really good to us. We're excited every year to offer scholarship money to deserving young ladies, and so I'm going to get out of the way and bring the real star up here, and you're going to be very impressed with this young lady. And when she gets started, you'll understand what I'm talking about. So Miss Garner, Mara Westbrook.
Hi, Council. It's great to see a lot of you again. Many of you I have met throughout my time serving here in Garner and attendees. It's lovely to see you as well. I'm not from Garner, but I can tell in the short time that I've served this community that it really is a community, and you can feel the sincerity of everyone here. And I want to echo what Larry said about our gratitude for the investment that you give this organization. It is life-changing for young women. The way that it is propelled, not only my career, but the opportunities that I've had throughout my lifetime have been exponential, and it's solely because of the scholarship dollars that I've gotten through this organization, almost ten grand in the five years that I've been competing. And hopefully, when I compete for Miss North Carolina in June and bring the title back to Garner, my student debt will be completely paid for. Some of the things that I do as Miss Garner, my community service initiative, is about female homelessness, eradicating and alleviating it. I have a strong partnership with the Women's Center in Raleigh of the Triangle, a partnership I've flourished for the past three years. Some of the things I do is shelter drives, feminine care hygiene, packaging events, clothing drives for Dress for Success and our goodwill as well. Some of the things that I've done in Garner throughout Christmas time, I know maybe some of you have seen me in the parades. I've done a lot with the community, our Veterans Thing, which I saw many of you at, and it's been an incredible opportunity to serve this community even in the five months that I've been Miss Garner. Again, just want to echo my gratitude to you all and to be here tonight and share a little bit about myself, this organization, and how excited I am to go to Miss North Carolina and hopefully come back as our next Miss North Carolina.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask our council members, while you're up, if we have any words of wisdom or words of thanks or comments we might want to pass along. We'll start with Mr. Elmo Vance.
I would say, Mara, congratulations to you and for all the work that you've done in the area of female homelessness. Hope we continue on with that endeavor. It's definitely needed, and wish you much success in the future.
Congratulations and hope to see you back here as a winner.
I sure hope so as well.
I would like to see that as well. I also want to commend you for your work with the Raleigh Women's Center. The Garner Women's Club works with the Women's Center, and that need is just unimaginable, and it's ongoing. So thank you so much for investing yourself in it.
And congratulations on your award.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations, and you did a really nice job with your presentation. We looked at us, did a really good job. I can tell you've done this before, and you did really well with your presentation. That counts.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck on bringing the title back here. It would be really nice. And I've had the privilege of working with you on the Veterans Events and what have you, and we've got our Memorial Day Monday coming. It's going to be at Lake Benson Park. It starts at, I believe, nine thirty, so I'll put a word out on that, and it's always a big event, and you most certainly are invited, as well as your teen counterparts. She was with us at our last meeting, and like you, she's very well-spoken, and it impresses me when you don't see people having to read notes or read iPhone, that it comes from the heart and what you've worked so hard for. So take that to the big show, and you'll probably come back a winner.
Thank you. And I think there's an opportunity for a photo op here.
Oh, perfect.
Mr. Mercer.
Mayor doesn't ever miss a chance.
I have plenty of experience with our mayor.
One more.
One more.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth this year as National Public Works Week. There's a proclamation to be read, and I'm going to call on our longtime council member Grace Singleton, who has been a loyal supporter of Public Works, of keen interest all the way through. If you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation.
Yes, sir, Mayor. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty-two thousand twenty-five, People, Purpose, and Presence. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Garner. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of Garner to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the two thousand twenty, the year two thousand twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, Mr. Buddy Gupton, the Mayor of the Town of Garner, does hereby proclaim the week of eighteen, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. He urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Signed by Buddy Gupton, Mayor Garner.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, sir.
And before the presentation, I'd always like to remind everyone that this job number one of every municipal government is public safety. We think about the glamorous jobs like the fire, police, the rescue, first responders. Sometimes we forget the essential work of public, of the public works and all the things they do, maintaining roads, sidewalks, parks, buildings, that keep us safe in the same way. So it's part of the number-one job for every town government. Saying that, I'd also like to call on our Assistant Town Manager, Matt Poole, for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor Gupton, members of council. On behalf of the manager's office, it is my honor to call upon our Public Works Director, Forrest Jones, this evening. Forrest and I, last week, meeting in his office, we were discussing various topics, and I looked at some of his memorabilia in his office, and there was a, there was a tree stump made, and it was made into a clock, and it was from Hurricane Fran. And I noticed it in his office, and when I left, I was reflecting back on that hurricane. I was a new firefighter at the time, and I started reflecting back on all the natural disasters we've had since then of hurricanes, ice storms, tornadoes. And what I reflected on was during every one of those emergencies that I had the honor of serving as a firefighter, standing beside police, fire, and EMS was another group of unsung heroes, first responders such as Public Works. And it is my opinion as a former fire chief that Public Works does not get the credit they deserve as being first responders. And so I'm appreciative of the opportunity to introduce Forrest tonight and his team and thank them. From one first responder to another, there has never been a disaster in our community where Public Works has not stood beside emergency services. They serve in our E O C, and they help us in all of these matters. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jones tonight to be recognized with, for he and his team for the Public Works Week.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my privilege to stand before you this evening and to recognize our, honor, recognize our Public Works staff. I'm here to share a little bit about the history and context of National Public Works Week. Since the mayor of already, as Mr. Singleton already alluded to, this is our sixty-fifth year of recognizing that from an American Public Works Association. In nineteen sixty-one, President John F. Kennedy declared that was the first time the president declared and recognized National Public Works Week. So we're a little bit, we're about a year behind. I'd like to thank Mr. Poole for recognizing us as one of the professionals as part of the first responder community. In two thousand and three, President George W. Bush formally acknowledged Public Works as a first responder. You might ask, well, Forrest, that was over twenty years ago, so why are we just hearing about that now? Well, that one's on us. We've not done a good job of telling our story over the years. For a long time, the measure of success in Public Works was to be invisible, to do the job so well it looked like we were never there. Leave it better than you found it has been our quiet motto. While that humility is admirable, it often means we're noticed only when something goes wrong, meaning we don't do our job. Several years ago, I stood before you accepting a similar proclamation. At that time, Ms. Miller asked, "What color do we plan to light up Town Hall in recognition of Public Works Week?" We'd never done that before. I quickly looked back and thought, well, orange. And went back and conferred with our folks at National to confirm that was our color, and I think I might have been the first person to ask that question because they didn't have a quick answer. So thank you, Ms. Miller, for that thoughtful nudge. This year, as always, we have a few events planned to celebrate our National, to celebrate National Public Works Week. We'll have our annual equipment rodeo tomorrow, which I hope many of you will be able to come out and enjoy and watch some of our staff compete and show off their skills in a variety of things and in some just fun team-building activities, and perhaps you may even have an opportunity to try your hand at some of those. We welcome you to that and look forward to lunch. We're also hosting a shred event this year on Friday at the G R C in conjunction with the Garner Police Department. So again, trying to tie us two first responders back together, and we'll look to do some more opportunities in future year. So that will be from ten a.m. until noon at the parking lot at G R C. In closing, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the continued support of our Public Works Department. It is truly my honor and privilege to stand here tonight representing that fine group of men and women who do the work every day to make each and every one of us look great. So thank you very much, Town Council, Mayor. Thank you, Town Staff and Leadership, Ms. Chody and your team, for your support, and we definitely feel it over the years, and we appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And while you're up there, Mr. Jones, I'm going to ask again if council members want to make comments. I'll start with Mr. Matthews while I work my way down there for the photo op and the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations again on you and your team. And people don't realize what you do till things start happening, as Assistant Manager Poole said. So thank you again for what you guys do and your entire team, and we're going to be growing, and your job's just going to get bigger. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Forrest, what a lot of what y'all do is grunt work, grunt work, sweat, dirty jobs. That's what a lot of Public Works work is. Not all of it, but substantial, my mind, of it is grunt work. And a lot of people, you know, just expect it to get done, and it gets done. Keep these grounds here at Town Hall, all the facilities looking good, all the work y'all do with right-of-ways and roadways and so forth. So a lot of people just don't realize that. Plus, you keep all the vehicles moving, the town vehicles, a hundred, hundred-plus vehicles the town has. So it's a lot of work, and a lot of it is not seen by people, but a lot of it is to keep your hands dirty, hands in the dirt, grunt work. And so it has to be done. That's what Public Works does. It does a mighty good job over here in Garner.
Thank you.
Another way of saying that is that you're the heroes behind the scenes. People don't see what you do, but they don't see you doing it, but they see what you did, and we appreciate that. We couldn't, we couldn't make it without you. And I'd also like to, kind of a inside, not a joke, but inside comment. Forrest has a wife that gives very good advice, okay? Not necessarily to Forrest. I mean, she gives good advice. And I've appreciated that over the years. Thank you for everything, Forrest. It's wonderful to know that we can count on you and your department every day.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, I guess, even before my time on council, when I was on DGA. And you can always count on Public Works to be that trusted partner to help events get set up, help events get taken down. While you're doing all the other stuff, you never had to worry that something else wasn't going to get done. So I think the help with the Christmas parade, for example, is always tremendous lift, all those downtown events, and then the tornadoes, of course. I remember that day. Mr. Matthews and I went over there, Timber and Woodland, and right in our wake, here comes the help. Here comes cavalry helping the neighbors, and the humility is a problem because nobody's mentioned parks, parks, parks. Y'all take care of the parks, which a lot of people don't realize, a little differently here in Garner, but the upkeep, the maintenance, the services, all of that stuff falls on you guys. So we owe you a great debt, a debt of gratitude with regards to the stellar nature of our parks and the growth of those in the future. So thank you for what you do, and thank everyone that works under you and for you and for the town. Pass that on to them as well.
Thank you, and I like to say, we've got a lot of partners as well across town. It's not just Public Works. We have a lot of good support in Parks and Rec and organizing and engineering planning. We have a strong team here, so thank you.
Yes, I would like to echo what has already been said. Congratulations on being recognized with the proclamation for National Public Works Week, and just And just want to, not, not repeat what has been said, but in one particular, one particular area of going out and talking to the public. I know that you personally have gone out and talked with citizens about situations they were having relative to, and particularly drainage, and how drainage can be cleared to prevent their properties from flooding. I appreciate the manner in which you expeditiously have responded to those requests and how you are trying to fulfill them when you can. Thank you so much, and really appreciate what you all do.
Thank you. And one thing I will do before I leave, I'll leave some stickers to help remind us about public works as a first responder with the town attorney, and she can pass them out later. Thank you.
You posed a Miss Garner Latin there, and now you pose a Mr. Public Works.
Well, that was a lot of fun and a lot of recognition that was well deserved by a lot of folks. Thank you, Mr. Mercer, for recording that for history, very important part of it. That brings us along to the consent agenda. There are four items on there this evening that have been studied, looked at by the council and by the staff. And typically, they're brought forward as one, one group that's kind of like pre-reviewed, and we pass them in one particular motion. But I have to ask if any council member sees an item that needs to be broken out for any further discussion, or if we can do this as a consent agenda. Hearing none, it looks like we can pass all of these as a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Matthews and second by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Now we move to the even more fun part than the celebrations, and here comes some public hearings. And it's always important to read the little disclaimer at the beginning. Tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings which do not require sworn testimony. However, all persons interested in speaking must sign up with the town attorney. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And the first public hearing that comes up involves one, believe it or not, one of my favorite topics here, junk vehicles. Because it's a, it's a fight we can win. This is not as complicated as cancer. This is something that we can get, get a grip on and take care of. And our presenters are going to be Terry Jones, town attorney, and Paul Paget, our inspections director, and you're going to tell us about our war on junk and abandoned vehicles.
Good evening, council and mayor and staff. So we are having our public hearing for amendments to the junk and abandoned vehicle ordinance. Just got a few slides to show those changes. First, we'll start off with just a little bit of information on cases. Our system can go back to two thousand nineteen. What we've got up here is the number of cases for that year, and these are tracked January to December. How many were founded as meeting the definition of junk vehicles? How many were unfounded? How many were corrected by the owner? How many were corrected by the town, which means we'd had them towed? And then the other portion was either that initial one came in and there were found to be multiple vehicles out there, or it was handed off to P D because it didn't meet a portion of our junk vehicles that our department could handle. So you can see, we're steadily working on getting that number down. We do know that there's a lot of vehicles out there. Right now, it is mostly a complaint-driven function, but we are having staff be more proactive in that. Before we move forward, any questions on how we're tracking? All right, so the first change we're going to make is in the definitions of junk vehicles. So statutory and code share a definition. Vehicle that does not display a current license plate and one of the following. The first one is partially dismantled or wrecked. Second is cannot be self-propelled or moved in the manner in which it originally was intended to move. And the third is more than five years old and appears to be worth less than five hundred dollars. It used to be one hundred dollars, we're changing it to match the statute. The next one is just terminology in regards to, the code designates a community development department. That department no longer exists. So the statute also requires a duly authorized official to make the written findings that the aesthetic benefit of its removal outweighs the burden to the property owner before removing a junk vehicle from private property without the consent of the owner. The code designates the community development department, and the update would designate the town manager or designee to allow for flexibility. Our pre-towing appeal, the pre-towing hearing of some kind is required by statute. Code requirements, seven days minimum notice. The owner may appeal in writing prior to the tow. Removal stayed during the appeal process. What we're looking at removing is hearing is before the Board of Adjustments at the next regular meeting. We're looking at adding in heard by town manager or designee as soon as practical. Civil penalties, the code provides that violations may subject the offender to a civil penalty. The update would give discretion to assess penalties and encourage cooperation. So it allows flexibility to waive penal, or civil penalties as needed. Those are the changes. Let me get them here. And our next steps, we're recommending that the ordinance two thousand twenty-five, five three three four be adopted to allow for these changes in the town ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Paget. As the co-presenter, if I can add, I did provide you with the three comments that we received from the public through the Code Revision Project Public Comment Portal. So no substantive comments about the text changes, but we would recommend that you adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-five, fifty-three, thirty-four this evening.
Thank you. Are there any individuals who have signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up for this public hearing.
Then let's ask council members if they have any questions of the presenters. Let's start with Mr. Matthews.
No, no, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Vance?
No questions.
We've heard this before, haven't we? And we know that our town attorney has spent a great time and energy, along with an intern or two, who went through this stuff with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we are in compliance, not only with state regulations and case law, but it makes common sense and can be translated. And Paul and his staff have done an excellent job of working through this. There are several levels of junk vehicles. There's the ones in the public streets that the police can deal with, the ones that are in private property that meet the criteria Paul was talking about. And then even beyond that, there's some that could be a nuisance for other reasons, a little more complicated. But our town attorney's done an excellent job of going back and getting this, you probably had to look at thirty, forty years' worth of dusty old wordage that was in these things and shine them up and break it. And this is just the first of a number of ordinances, reviews, and updates that we're doing. But this is one that we needed to start, we needed to do, had not been in this office more than a few weeks till a citizen in the North Garner area said, please come ride with me and let me show you what my complaint is. He says, I'm afraid some of these yards look so much like junk yards that the people across the street or down the street can't sell their houses anywhere where they were. It gives a bad impression of the whole neighborhood. And he was right. And Paul and his team have made great progress. This is another tool for moving in that direction. And Paul, the only thing you didn't mention was the Garner Info App.
Yes.
Okay, here's your chance to make up for missing it the first time.
Yes. As I stated before, with it right now being a majority of complaint-driven, if you do see something that looks like a junk vehicle, if you put a notice in the Garner Info App, it'll get to staff, and then we'll follow up on it.
Excellent, thank you. We're promoting that pretty strongly, Garner Info App.
Yes, sir.
Go to the website, put it on your phone, take a picture, it gives you the address. You say junk vehicle right here, help me. Yeah. And then there's other things you can do with Garner Info App, but it's a great tool. Thanks, thank you for doing that. If there's no other individuals who need to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Ask council members if there's any other discussion, or would there be a motion per, and a second perhaps, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five, five three three four?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move, a motion's made by Mr. Vance, second by Ms. Behringer, to approve the ordinance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Great job. Thanks for all your work on those things. It'll continue to be my little hobby, looking for junk cars and putting them on the Garner Info App. Thank you. Okay, moving along to item number two on the public hearings. This is the fiscal year twenty-six recommended budget. Our presenter is Sharon Warren, Sarah Warren, our budget director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight is our official public hearing on the budget. Just a reminder before we open it up, this is our current calendar. We are currently at the May twentieth work session, our second public hearing, our first official public hearing. And we have added the next work session on May twenty-seventh to this calendar if there are other follow-up items that we need to address at that time, with the target date of adopting the budget on June third. Just a reminder of our webpage, we have made some updates to it since Manager Miller presented the budget on May sixth. We've now posted the recommended budget to be viewed, so there's PDF version as well as the message, and then our video that you've now seen that our wonderful communications team put together. The public comment form is also still available. This is the Q R code to access it. So for those that want to continue to make some comments after tonight, that portal will remain open through the beginning of June. We can extend it if that is requested. There have not been any other additional entries that we've received since our last communication with you on those comments. So with that, I will allow you to open up the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Very, very informative. We've seen this before. We spent a half a day last week, council did, looking at this in detail with your assistants who went along. And let me now recognize any council members who wish to ask questions of you, and let's start at this end with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. I thought we had a good presentation at our work session, and all my concerns and questions have been answered, and I have no issues at this time.
Mr. Singleton?
If you let me get the floor and keep it, I'll be in here about an hour.
No, no, we're going to go about five minutes at a time. We'll, we'll take turns asking questions and make some time.
I asked some questions last week that said we'd get answers tonight, but I'll see if we get them. I got lots of questions. I'll probably email some of those, some of the answers I got back from last week for clarification. I talked about the F T Es that have been projected for Jürgen Park, and you gave me a calendar of when some of these positions will be hired, they're F T Es, twelve F T Es. But three of the F T Es, it says, position allocation for fiscal year will be June twenty-six, so next year, so they're just an F T for a month. Is that, am I reading that correct?
That is correct. So we are, there is a desire to start hiring before the end of the fiscal year in order to capture those positions that will lead up to the park, so that there's a timing that parks and public works have worked through to ensure that the positions are hired at the optimal time to prepare for that opening in the fall.
Okay, I understand that, but they're only going to be here a month, so it's not really F T Es until the next budget year, and they're only going to be working thirty days. That's my question.
Mr. Singleton, in order-
They're showing their F T Es, but they're not full-time in this budget we're talking about.
Yeah, it would be next year's budget, and because it does fall within the last month of the fiscal year, we do have to acknowledge and put it in, in terms of our F T E count. So it would be added new as an F T E count for, for next fiscal year, and then it would carry over to the year after.
So they'll be, they'll be really new in the twenty-seven budget?
The fiscal impact would be realized for the full-time position in the F Y twenty-seven budget, but as you heard, Ms. Warren chair, part of the strategy, working with our parks team and our public works team, is that in order to make sure the park is fully ready to open at the projected date, which is about October of two thousand twenty-six, we need to make sure staff are hired and trained up and working on the facility.
Okay, well, we hadn't had anything getting done on time recently, so I'm not, we hope October twenty-six, but I'll, I think we'll all believe that when we see it, based on our last three big projects. Had numerous questions about the group insurance. I don't know if you want to answer them now or me to ask them later because the answer you gave me was not a good answer.
Yeah, so we, we're working on that. We're doing some work, deep, further analysis on that, and we'll have that information ready for our work session. So we're doing some cross-referencing between our budget work and also our new H R software. So, so what, we're able to answer the questions last week that we were able to do fairly quickly, and then the other pieces, we're still working on that analysis, and we'll have that information available to you for your discussion at your work session on Tuesday.
Okay, for clarification on the question about the monies where street resurfaces looked like there was less dollars in the projected budget, excuse me, proposed budget, were just money that was unspent that we're going to be using in that budget?
Yes, sir, that, that is true. And as we're doing further refinement to the budget work, there may be an opportunity to have some additional dollars there. So that's why we want to complete our analysis and come back to council with some additional updates based on what we've learned.
I've looked at some of our sister communities and what they were doing to, to focus on streets, and Apex in particular added one and a half million dollars in their budget for streets, along with some other, they call them pavement projects, safety projects, so forth and so on, so.
And I just-
And they got more streets than we do, but still, that's a substantial, that's ten times more than our-
And I would say, at a minimum, we're able to do next year what we're doing this year, but I think there's going to be an opportunity to do more. So let us continue to finalize that work and bring it forth for council's update on Tuesday.
Okay, I'll stop, Mayor, I'll, I've got a couple more questions to ask.
Well, those are very important questions, and we don't want to overlook these. I do want to point out, we're not here to make a decision tonight. We're here to get input from the public and from the council, of course. And again, we, we had a half-day session last week on this. May twenty-seventh, we'll have a work session for more details. And there's many opportunities for one-on-one or small group discussions with any members of the staff, budget staff, the finance staff, town managers. So I, I'd like every citizen to make sure they scan the little Q R code, put in questions and comments there through the portal. Council members, you can go direct, go, go direct to the people involved. We've had nothing but good results from our budget and our finance people in responding to this stuff. So again, all very important questions, all need asking. Some of those things we can do in, in the work session and in some small group settings with our folks. As we move along, Ms. Behringer questions, so Mr. Dellinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of questions as well, but also have some outstanding queries that I'm going to assume we don't have answers to tonight since they're not being presented that accurate.
Tonight's focus is just the public hearing, all the information that's been requested and follow-up from our work session last week. We're going to have responses for you for your work session next week. So we'll have it as part of the agenda packet that'll come out on Thursday.
So, you know, we've only had budget for two and a half weeks as council and the public, but I'll speak for me. It takes a lot of time to go through it, which I've done. I generate a lot of questions to which I need feedback from the staff to get those answers so I can synthesize that and then have other conversations with council about concerns, which has proved to be very fruitful. concerns, which has proved to be very fruitful historically that we can analyze those things and have conversations about those things. So I'm a little, little frustrated because the list of questions is long. I didn't get all of them on budget because I was hoping those could help inform some of these other questions. And now we're trying to pass the budget on June 3rd, which if we're gonna get answers at our work session, if those answers aren't satisfactory, that doesn't leave a lot of time for figuring out an alternative. So I'll pass, I've got the same, to the FTE question, all those FTEs are fully funded in next year even though they're a month? Or how is that, how are they structured? And that was the question that the budget session was, how are those being accounted for in next year's budget?
And I can let Budget Director Warren talk about that in terms of how they're funded for next year in terms of the timing. And I believe we have shared some of that information.
Yeah, so based upon the chart that you received, the FTEs are authorized, but they are only funded for the period of time starting on their start date. So Mr. Singleton is correct that for some of those positions that are starting late in the fiscal year, they're only funded for a month in FY 26. All of those positions will be funded for a full year in FY 27. But because of the way we structure our authorized full-time equivalent count, our FTE count, we do have to approve a full-time FTE although we are only funding it for a portion of the year.
Yeah, I just, it seems like an inflated number of FTEs are being allocated to the next fiscal year when they're not even going to come online the next one. And when you're only funding for one month, you're pushing that full FTE into that next year's budget. And so that was one of the concerns I had at the budget meeting was we weren't fully accounting for all of the FTEs one in one place because of the police contingency and those part-time things. And now it becomes clear why it's harder to project out into the future because we're pushing a bunch of FTE expenses into the next year. So I, I just, the constrained timeline is giving me some concern because we're not, we're not getting a lot of time to review the budget. We're not getting a lot of time to review the answers, some of which we've not gotten yet. And then we still have to engage our constituents on the budget and it's hard to answer questions when they're asking me questions, I'm asking the questions back and I, we're not getting answers yet, so.
So I will, I do want to confirm that the positions that are funded in 26 for Jürgen are fully funded in FY 27 and are included and projected in that multi-year model for a full year.
Yeah, and I understand that. I'm saying it explains the explosion of positions in the next year on top of kind of the baseline growth. So I'll pass for now and I can come back to some specific questions I hope we can answer or address timelines for when they could be answered. But I think the June 3rd, given that we're not, haven't gotten received answers to queries yet, is gonna be very, very tight even if we address those things during the work session.
And Mr. Dellinger, if I could provide some clarity, the June 3rd is just the target. We've always described it as the target date if council feels comfortable and ready to approve the budget. There's certainly, there's certainly a second meeting in June that based on council's guidance and direction, if you feel like you have, want to have more discussion or you need more time, we can move it to that second meeting as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in terms of a process for review and discussion by council. The other thing I would add is we are responding to the questions and comments that were at last Thursday's work session as quickly as we can. The things that we were able to answer quickly, we did, we sent that out on Friday afternoon. Some of the harder questions require additional analysis, reviewing and double checking and we want to make sure that we provide the correct information to council. So we set our goal to be able to provide that information ahead of your work session on Tuesday. So I just wanted to reassure the council that we're working on it.
Just a, and just a point of clarity on that for future reference, when doing the calendar, it might be helpful to identify it as a target date. I believe it said council adopts budget on June 3rd on the timeline. So I think for the public's sake, it's clearer if it's indicated as a target versus we are absolutely going to adopt the budget on that day. So I'll pass to Mr. Vance, I've got, still questions.
Okay, well, again, thank you both council members for the very probing, astute questions that we have and thank you. One moment, we'll roll back around. Just wanted to also thank our town manager for telling us again, this is part of the process, there will be a work session next week. There's time between now and then for one-on-one, two-on-one meetings with any staff as well as the public can access the portal and our access to council members as well. We don't have to make a decision tonight. This is primarily for public input and of course for questions from council as well. So saying that, then all have to be answered. We just got explained that June 3rd adoption is certainly a target and probably have gone longer. I don't think we'll be up at midnight on the day before July 1st like Congress is waiting to keep the government open or backdating our watches or anything. I think we'll be ahead of the curve and ready to move ahead well before July 1st. May not be June 3rd. This is important stuff, we don't, don't want to get stampeded through it, but we want to get the information that we need. So that being said, I'll make another round through the council here for another question or so. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, the budget should not be adopted any earlier than the 17th. Just as posted online, we're gonna ask questions, get them answered next week and there'll be seven days till the June 3rd date. So the public will not have any time to see corrected numbers. So June 17th should be the date at the earliest. One of our comments in the portal said, how can we comment on the proposed budget if we cannot view it first? Where's the transparency? You can meet on some one-on-one meetings or two-on-one meetings, remember, we should be talking about the budget in public, this isn't the legislature or Congress where we gotta meet behind closed doors and the budget's decided by a half dozen people out of 100, not half dozen people that we just happen to be. But anyway, June 17th should be the earliest and we've adopted more sessions before when we weren't rounding around. So I'll state also that I, and again, I wasn't there last week because of my father's hospitalization. And I still asked a question about the Affordable Housing Task Force and that position and disappointed to hear that there wasn't a whole lot of support for it. I don't understand why because you want more data, but you gotta create a job position and then advertise and hire, so you're not gonna hire somebody for six to nine months. And then at time, the data's gonna be coming in. So if you hire, if you create a position and hire someone with the ground running with the information, you can start instead of waiting to next year. So that position should be definite in this budget because if you're not committed to it and you're not gonna make an effort, then what the heck are we doing here? Why do we have the task force? That's a waste of time. The recommendation from the task force stated that. And you have a comment on here from Mr. Swain who was on the task force. So I urge us to put that position in there. Again, it won't be funded for 12 months, it'll be funded for six months or eight months and I mean, five months or six, four months, whatever. But if you put that position in place and you're waiting for the data, then the person here can hit the ground running with the data. And that's just, anyway, that position should be a priority as much as anything we've got because of the housing issues that we're hearing about from people. All right, I'll stop for now.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. I do have one comment. The budget document was very, excuse me, very cumbersome. It was a lot to read, but I believe that in time that I've been on the council, we got that document earlier than I have ever remembered getting it before in, prior to the first round of conversation. So I appreciated that, Mr. Warren, Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger, second round.
You have a question on the calculation of salaries and merit pay and cost of living adjustments. I know I asked for that information to be pulled out three weeks ago and I don't have that information.
So we are prepared to provide that information ahead of next week. We do have that.
Can we get it this week?
It will be provided this week. The agenda goes out on Thursday. You'll have all that information.
So, okay, so all of the cost of living adjustment?
By department, by work area, by department, yes.
Okay. My other comment just on affordable housing is being on the task force, we did our work over a five-month period. We were very efficient, we worked very hard, got a standing ovation. It's now been six months and five months since that committee stopped its work. And so I think it's, the urgency of what was heard during those five months and the urgency with which, if you listen to the news of these issues nationally but also in Garner, there's just a lack of urgency to address something that is affecting a lot of our residents. And that bothers me as, as a resident. One of the most potent comments from one of our committee members was, Mr. Reverend Robinson said, man, imagine what we could have done if we'd started this five years And the old adage of when's the best time to start, yesterday or last week? Second best time is now. And I just wish in our prudent and thoughtful deliberations, as we want to have in and inside of this chamber and outside of this chamber, that we are adopting a sense of urgency that is reflective of the problem. We speak often of wanting to support our fire, public works, police, so proud to come work here, they can't afford to live here. I'll pass, I've got a few more budget specific questions, but it sounds like we're not gonna get a lot of information. There's still work in, so I'll let them work.
Mr. Vance, second round. Comments, questions? Okay, that's, it's a lot of stuff. I don't know how long we want to go. We do have some citizens here, I think some wanted to sign up to speak. While we, while the hearing is officially open, I think perhaps we should recognize individuals who have signed up to speak. Can you, how many do we have?
We have one individual who's signed up to speak.
Okay, and who is that?
Rex Whaley.
Okay, Mr. Whaley, would you address the podium there and state your full name and address and, and remember the three-minute limit, sir?
I'm aware, I'm aware of the three minutes.
Thank you.
Very aware. Rex Whaley, 102 Pine Way Street. Thank you, Mayor and council members for a chance to speak. And I'm a little surprised, some of the comments I was gonna make, I've, I've heard from some of the council members. First off, I really wasn't planning to come tonight, but some things that transpired in the last couple of weeks. And then I had a few questions that I had submitted, so I'm glad to hear I'm not the only one that wasn't able to get some answers. But first, thanks for no tax increases, that was a major accomplishment this year. My concern is, and I've mentioned it last year, is there's not enough detail in the budget. We asked for public comment and this is the last public hearing, as I think it was mentioned up here, we're still waiting for information to come trickling out and, you know, I won't get another chance to come down here and speak. This is the last public hearing. Yeah, we got the portal, but it would be nice to have some of this out in the open for public discussion. So my concern is there's just a lack of information in the budget to really make decisions or understand what's going on. For example, I know there was about $6 million in new revenue and I can see where about 3.8 was identified as how it's being spent, but there's another $2 million. Think about a million was for insurance, which I've heard mentioned. And so I tried to get some information, granted, it was, my questions weren't submitted to yesterday, but that million dollar, that's about $3,000 something dollar increase per employee. And I'm kinda surprised when I hear, well, we're doing analysis. If you got a million-dollar item increase in the budget and we can't explain to the public how we got there, that, that's a little shocking to me. And then I see that there's some, I think it was house preservation, I'm confused, I think I see 100% or 50% increase, it looks like 100%. And there was really no data to explain, you know, the funding of that. I know we got a lot of issues, we're talking about housing. And I make that comment, not that I'm opposed to the funding, yet I'd love to see some information about why we're making such a significant investment because it may need to be more if they're doing a lot of good things. So I'm not saying not fund them, but maybe it needs to be more because housing has been a big, big issue. And there was questions I heard too about the multi-year budget projections when you try to look at those. So it's just very difficult to analyze the budget. I know with some of the, the parks, I've looked at like parks and public works, I noticed, when you look at some of the information, the FTEs and the dollar and fringe benefit amounts just don't jive. And that just makes me concerned because if they're off one place, then are they off somewhere else? And it's something I've discussed before on another, another area. So those are the concerns that there's just not, I've got 11 seconds, there's just not enough information in that budget to get adequate public input. And also I'm concerned, you know, it was mentioned that we're the 10th fastest growing community of population of 20,000. We need to really start making wiser investments with our budget dollars in things. So we need to look, for example, I know it was mentioned housing. I think we need to start looking at how we invest in economic development, where are areas in Garner that where the town can make some investments aside from parks, but that would help attract some investments, commercial and residential, that would actually contribute financially to the town. You know, rarely see anything in there. And it was funny, we mentioned Public Works, the recognition tonight, because one comment I saw where Public Works wanted a road car and we didn't fund it. And not to pick on anybody, but when I look at the budget, for example, there's, with the fire department merger, there's a budget position. And I'm thinking, well, why do we need a budget position for adding the $12 million for the fire department when it's, I think, like 84% salary and benefits? So it's just trying to understand those decisions, what we're funding and not funding as a resident, that's very concerning to me. And I know I had asked for some information on the 3% salary increase in the 4% and was told I might get it after the 27th.
We're about a minute over here, Mr. Whaley.
Yeah, okay. You know, these are important issues, Mayor.
Yes, they are.
And so I think I'm telling everyone to sign up, so it's not like I'm holding people up. I just don't understand this three-minute and how we're just trying to silence people from speaking. But anyway, I asked for the salary information. Again, I'm just shocked that we build that into the budget and we can't provide it to the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whaley. We have no other speakers from, from the audience?
No one else has signed up this evening.
Okay, we can close the public hearing, we can still have more feedback from council at this point, but I think we should, we will officially close the public hearing at this point. There will be other public meetings, including the work session next week and possibly even again June 3rd and possibly the time after that. So there are public meetings, there is a process. That being said, we close the public hearing. The object of discussion tonight was to hear input from, from the public, to have questions, feedback regarding further discussion for the work session. Are there other items that we won't get on for, for next week's work session? Any issues that need addressing that we haven't addressed already?
I'm gonna point something out. May noticed the cost of service report got pulled from our website. The main reason it got pulled is because of that gentleman right there, because of the work he did in the drafts when there were errors in the next draft and then the final plan in November is because of the work that Mr. Whaley did and found. He sent questions to staff and to Mr. Beck last June who forwarded to Mr. Neuncafter. His numbers were right because the final draft, what he said was wrong and the, and the second, second version got corrected, but nobody told him until it came out. And so I met with him a few weeks ago and he found some more mistakes. So I met with Ms. Miller and Mr. Beck last week, Mr. Whaley and me, and found more errors in the cost of service report. Pretty significant ones because based off what the report that was out there is that on our commercial investment, we're losing money, cost of services. And that was incorrect because it was wrong, the data was not vetted properly. So we owe him a great debt of gratitude for going through the fine-toothed comb because from his profession, being a professional auditor and counted with the state of North Carolina and on the highest, auditing the highest levels of government, he audited that report and found it was wrong. So when he raises questions, I have, I'll listen to his questions because he's going through it with a, a different filter than all of us get through because he's a professional at doing this and we're not. So he raises concerns, I have some of those same concerns, but we, the, the cost of service report is, just needs more work, it's complex. And, but thanks to him, we don't have a report that's on our website that's incorrect. So I want to point that out.
Thank, thank you. We do appreciate input from all of our citizens, Mr. Whaley, that was important. Thank you. Other comments here or discussion, things that need to be on our list for next week's work session on the budget. Here and there, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, there's a couple outstanding, just to make sure they're gonna be addressed next week. One, we're sort of the analysis of the pay grades.
Yes.
Okay. And the Public Works Administration and street salaries and the group insurance?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I've got for now.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Vance, pass on that. Well, excellent. This was a good discussion, good questions. It's extremely important. We won't be panicked through this. Let's bear down on it for the next several weeks, as long as it takes. Thanks staff for the job they're doing. A lot of details, a lot of evolving work. So excellent job by everybody involved, including our citizen input. Thank you, Mr. Whaley, again. So that being said, we'll move along to some new and old business down here. Be sure and join us next week for the work session, where we'll talk about this some more. Item number one under new and old business is a Tier One conditional zoning request for 5828 Fayetteville Road. Our presenter is Thomas Rail. If you would, tell us what's going on. It seems like we've seen this one before too, Thomas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are back again for decision tonight. So good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight I'll be presenting CZ 24007, Tier One rezoning for 5828 Fayetteville Road. Our applicant is Floris Capital LLC. The owner is Adelfo Floris. This is a Tier One conditional rezoning request to rezone 6/10 of an acre from rural agricultural to light industrial conditional. The site is on 401 South, at the intersection of Fayetteville Road. And this, as again, this is a Tier One, so we don't have a master plan or a site-specific plan. Currently, it is zoned rural agricultural, which is primarily agricultural and low-density residential in nature. The current use of the property, it is vacant. It's on the west side of 401 South at the intersection with Fayetteville Road, at Coldseck Street, roughly halfway between Simpkins Road and George's Landing. Much of the area is single-family residential, but there's also a mix of smaller commercial and industrial uses. It also falls within our commercial highway overlay district, which we spoke about at the public hearing. The, the proposed conditions on the screen are identical to the ones you saw at public hearing, with one addition to condition number five. As a result of discussion and feedback at Planning Commission, it was determined that the applicant would need to write into the condition the operations and maintenance agreement with the Town of Garner for that bioswale that they're proposing on-site. So that was one addition we added in that bronze text there. From our neighborhood meeting, there were 84 properties and occupants within the notification radius. That meeting was held with the applicant on August 22nd with eight people in attendance. You have the full meeting information in your staff report. For staff review, for growth framework consistency, we were able to evaluate nine criteria. Six of them were rated strongly consistent. There was one modestly split and two strongly inconsistent. Again, the LI zoning choice was one of our strongly negative ratings. It's just not consistent with the neighborhood's typology of the area. And the industrial warehouse building also received a negative rating. But overall, there was strong consistency with the development intensity metrics of the site. For land use and community character in our comp plan evaluation, it was largely mixed. There were some high ratings given for the low intensity of the site, of the infill development. There were also high ratings given for the consistent size and scale to existing development in the area. There were low ratings given for the lack of design features and treatments as a destination and a lack of pedestrian connection. We will note that there is minimal pedestrian connection in that area 401 currently existing. So despite those two strong non-supporting scores for growth framework criteria, we can support an overall finding of consistency. There's marginal support for the land use, community character consistency, but we believe you can find an overall finding of consistency as well. Full review is in the staff report. We conducted a Planning Commission meeting April 14th. There were questions, including the following. Questions over allowable uses. Questions over what would be stored on-site and what kind of trucks would be on-site. Questions over site access and the driveway. There were questions over building materials and the size and scale of the building. Question over the bioswale inspection requirements, which is why we added that sentence into their zoning conditions. And appreciation for their narrow list of uses. If you'll remember from the first time it was presented to the second, we went from five to two uses permitted. Planning Commission adopted the following consistency statement. There was a motion to recommend approval by Commission Member Boyland, seconded by Commission Member Hodges, and it did pass unanimously six to zero. Tonight, one of your tasks will be to evaluate this plan based on consistency and reasonableness. The reasonableness criteria is there on the screen. And in page 49 of 50 of your agenda packet, you'll find the draft motions to find either consistent and reasonable and approve, or consistent and unreasonable and deny. Staff is here with question, to answer any questions for you. The applicant is also here. Again, they don't have a formal presentation, but they can answer any questions. The staff is here as well. So that is the end of my presentation at the moment.
Okay, stand by. Did, did the applicant want to make a presentation or make some comments?
I don't know. All for answering questions, again.
Questions only, there we go.
Yeah, you've been there before, too.
Yes, I have, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that being said, let me recognize council members who might wish to ask questions. Let's start with Mr. Vance, and come this way.
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Mr. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions.
Okay. Hearing no questions, we'll probably move along. You can return to your seat. No questions. Thank you, thank you. You have to stay up here another minute.
Yes, sir.
Let's see. Is, is there a, a motion to, to adopt ordinance 2025 5335?
I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 3 of the staff report as our own. And I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2025 5335, approving rezoning CZ 24007, as the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because the subject property would be suitable for the uses permitted by the proposed district versus the current districts. Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Vance, second by Mr. Matthews. Let's have a voice vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rail. And thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Floris. Thank you, that passes. Good luck with your building, I can't wait to see it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Item number two on new and old business is the Human Resources Committee appointment. And we just happen to have on hand with us tonight the two co-chairs, Mr. Vance and Mr. Dellinger. If you could let us know what's going on and what decision, if any, we need to make.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the council. I'd like to bring before you a recommendation from the Human Resources Committee to appoint Ms. Attorney Tiffany Gately to serve as the in-town member of the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions from council? Thanks, thanks to the HR Committee for doing your work. I think you've had a number of applicants and screenings to go through for a number of positions, and the work continues, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so we, it sounds like you've made a good choice on this one. Any questions from council members? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews? Hearing no questions, I'll, we, we had the motion, then we had a second, we had a discussion. Let's have a voice vote. All in favor of appointing Ms. Tiffany Gately to the Board of Adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Congratulations, you unanimously passed.
And Mayor Gupta, if I may add, to, to reiterate what you stated, that we, we will continue the interviewing process to fill the various positions starting next week. And hopefully we'll have more candidates come before the council in the very near future. We know there'll be a number of openings coming up at the end of June, and we are working diligently to try to make sure we get ahead of that, to have applicants available for consideration by the council in a very timely manner.
Excellent, thank you for the hard work, and there was a lot of work involved.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to committee reports. And we have some council members who are on various committees who might have a report. Let's start with Mr. Matthews. Any committee report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Veterans Committee, we've got a very big event coming up on Monday, Memorial Day. And later in the year, we do Veterans Day. And a lot of people say, what's the big difference? Well, in Memorial Day, we remember those that paid the supreme sacrifice. And this has been a big event every year. And so it will be held at Lake Benson Park on Monday at 9:30. Everybody is invited. We encourage you to bring a, a folding chair, because generally it's, it's a pretty good turnout out there. And we appreciate the board's support on this committee, because the veterans, you know, if you enjoy your freedom, think of veterans. And a lot of them made it back and a lot of them didn't. And as a Vietnam veteran myself, it, it means a whole lot to me. And I appreciate this council and what we do to support our events. We are a Purple Heart community, if you see those signs, and, and veteran proud. So everybody's welcome, but for seeing everybody out there.
Thank you, I look forward to it. It's always a great event and a great place by the Veterans Memorial at Lake Benson Park. Fantastic event. And tell me, what time's the kickoff again?
9:30, and we'll have tours of the memorial out there from the VFW and American Legion, explaining everything. And it's interesting sight to see and what's going on there. And we're going to be making some good positive changes to it a little bit later, making it more convenient.
Excellent, looking forward to it.
Everybody's welcome.
Looking forward to it. Committee reports, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir. The Art Committee would like to announce that we have had installed the most recent shroud for utility cabinets, entrance to White Deer Park. If you haven't seen it, by all means, please go out and take a look. And it's the largest one yet, so you may want to get out of your car and walk around it to see all of it. It's really very nice.
That's that much.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you very much. Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, I'll get mine right, for sure. So leading up to the town's Independence Day celebration on July 3rd, we kick off our Freedom Week with our Juneteenth observance on the 21st. We start at 11:00 a.m. We've got some really amazing oral histories that we've, that the Communications Department has helped with, that we'll have pieces of, but that's turning into a sort of an ongoing project to sort of document the history of Garner. And just to remind her, it's an open invitation to everyone, the entire community. It is not for any one group of people, it's for the entire community. And it does kick, kick off our sort of celebration of freedom leading up to July 3rd and acknowledging the freedom for everyone. So very excited about that. Put that on your calendar, July, June 21st at 11:00 a.m. at the GPAC.
What a fantastic venue, what a fantastic venue and what a fantastic event it has been, and I'd definitely digger and dadda than ever.
Right.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Vance?
Yes, sir.
I was about to say top that, I don't believe you're going to top that. Okay, well, thank you. And that brings us around to manager reports.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a few reports and updates for you this evening. First is your monthly Talk of the Town report, and I'll ask Assistant Manager Hodges if he'll provide an overview of this month's report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. Good evening, Mayor and council members. You have your report in your, your packet. We'll review a few highlights. Garner Police did have a promotions and recognition ceremony on April 21st, with a number of highlights included. The SBI Director Chip Hawley presenting Captain David Castillon with a Materius Meritus Service Award on behalf of the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police for his service during the response in the aftermath of recovery from Hurricane Helene. Also, the Order of the Longleaf Pine was presented to outgoing Police Chief Lori Smith. So it was a great event and, and great recognitions that were presented that night. Also want to recognize our communications team for an award that they recently won. They were one of 27 North Carolina jurisdictions to earn recognitions from NC3C, the North Carolina City and County Communicators Group. And they won an Award of Communications Excellence, a first-place honor for promotional video done for the police department's recruitment video. And this was coordinated largely by Kyle Kettler and also collaborating with Sergeant Joseph Gomes in the police department. The nominations are open now for the James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award, so that application is available on the town's website. So if you or anyone listening to the meeting tonight knows someone that would be deserving of that, applications are open through June 30th. Also excited to announce a new program that the town is co-sponsoring with the Garner Chamber of Commerce. It is the inaugural cohort of Leadership Garner. And this is a program that the chamber is leading the planning efforts on. That's a dynamic, dynamic new program designed to develop and, develop and connect emerging leaders of all ages in our community. It'll be held from June through September. Applications are being accepted now. The, the town is pleased to be coordinating several of the, the sessions for that. One will be a Town Hall Day that we'll be hosting here. We'll also be helping co-host the Economic Development course for the program, as well as communicating with our public safety courses. So again, the availability of the applications available on the Garner Chambers website. And I think, we may have announced this at the last meeting as a forthcoming event, but the long-awaited opening of the boathouse has arrived. The boathouse was opened recently and, and will be open Friday through Sunday from 8:00 to 3:00. Last announcement was our Memorial Day observance, and Mr. Matthews has already covered that for you tonight. Also on your report, you will see the Garner Info monthly analytics. If you have any questions about those, please let us know. I think this month, we're leading with miscellaneous streets and tall grass and weeds, and as I mentioned, most months, keep in mind that these are the items that are turned in by folks using the app. And our teams are out doing proactive work that you don't see reflected in these numbers every day. So thank you to all the folks who are responders in our Garner Info Citizens app.
That's all I have, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Are there any questions from council regarding our Talk of the Town report this evening? Next on our agenda is the Economic Development Quarterly Report. I'm going to ask Director Bruegger. Maybe he'll join us and provide an overview of this quarter's report.
There we go, everyone can see that. Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to present. I know we're at the end of the meeting, so I'll be meaningful of your, of your time here. Always like to start off with any economic development presentation, just again reinforcing the focus area of our department that we're working on. Want to give a special shout-out and kudos to Bella and Communications for creating this new format that we're excited for tonight. Little bit different approach than we've traditionally given. And also want to be sure to thank April Wood for her fine work that she's done. She cannot be here tonight. She had an urgent family matter that she needed to attend to tonight, or else she would be presenting along with me. April has not just hit the ground running, she's hit the ground sprinting. If you come by 120 East Main, you will absolutely see her fingerprints on some touches, different touches we have there in the office. So please swing by and, and visit us. So, starting off with entrepreneurship and small business, we were delighted to have our fourth Launch Garner, Launch Garner graduation this March. We started out with a class closer to 10, and ended up with six graduates. The Launch Garner programs, a little bit like basic training, where you start out with a little bit larger class, and then sometimes life gets in the way and you end with a little bit smaller number there. But this was a great cohort. And one of our Main Street businesses, Melody from Steep Right Up, was actually in the, in the program and, and learned a lot and was very appreciative of it. And also want to be sure to shout out to Shalon Maxil of Bunts by Bernay that we all know. She was the keynote speaker and provided dessert that everybody was, was pleased to take a, take a part in. So, moving right along, our North Carolina Main Street Conference was held in March. Congratulations again to Mr. Dellinger for receiving the champion award. It was a great conference that Mrs. Behringer and April and Mary with Banks, Ben Breakfast and DGA Board Chair Joyce Stevens attended. So moving on to community promotion and marketing. In case you're not aware, we have launched our Garner Economic Development LinkedIn page, which has been very successful in helping us market the Metro 201 project. which has been very successful in helping us market the Metro 201 Project, as we're calling it. Name's not official, it's just kind of a placeholder there. But that has helped us market that, and we've received numerous calls and requests for more information about that project. I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. I was able to participate in an interview with ABC News 11 to talk about Garner and our growth. And then Assistant Town Manager, Mr. John Hodges, did a radio interview. I know the mayor did an interview today, and I know we have another one tomorrow. So, I believe Mrs. Hodges did, or Mrs. Miller did one last week as too. So, we're pleased to see the positive public relations and kind of press that Garner's receiving. So, moving on to our first Downtown Garner Association event of the year, we had our food truck rodeo. I know I can say that the feedback that I received was overwhelmingly positive. We had over 700 people that attended. It was packed, really kind of from start to finish. We had a kind of diverse group of food trucks that we didn't normally have, so we were pleased for that. And again, kudos to April for pulling off her first event, really just very shortly after she started. And I would say it was an over- rounding success. So, moving on to our youth Leadership Garner Program. I know the mayor participated in that. I think he's in the picture there that we had with the youth. That was a fun day where the youth from South Garner High School and Garner-Magnan High School came here, really just to understand how the town works and understand the different departments. And then they participated in a budget exercise that I know they had a lot of fun in. So we were pleased to have them for that. And then they took a tour of downtown and visited some of the downtown businesses after they were done here. So, keeping on the theme with downtown, our Grooving and Garner Concert Series, catchy name, I think, is coming soon. So, our first concert will be on June 20th at the lawn behind the Garner Rec Center. So we're pleased to offer this new event offering for our downtown Garner merchants and visitors. So, moving right along to our business retention and recruitment. I know I mentioned earlier the Metro 201 Project, so we continue to meet with potential tenants on that every week. We are pleased with the strong interest we are seeing and the kind of forward progress that we're making on that. So, stay tuned, more to come. You can see there the usual numbers that we show for the request for information leads that we get from our friends at the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina and Wake County. You can see that we received 39 for the first quarter, and we're only able to submit two. And that was really, again, just because of the lack of available sites and product. So, moving right along to our chamber visit. I know a lot of us here in the room took the trip, the early morning trip on the train, where we visited Charlotte and Concord and Kannapolis. Had a great trip, being able to learn about the downtown development they're working on, as well as see firsthand the LMG partnership that we've been working on, obviously with the LMG group that's working on Metro 201, to be able to see their developments firsthand. I know that was a treat for all of us and a good learning information session for us. And then, last but certainly not least, our site and product development initiatives. So, we are pleased that 290,000 square feet of new flex space was recently approved by council on Wilmington Road. Obviously, that's much needed, going back to the RFIs that we were not able to submit to. Having that space open up, obviously, will make us be able to submit for economic development projects in the future. And then going right along with the 236,000 square feet of new flex space that was recently approved for the Garner 6 Project. That 236,000 square feet will bring the total Maris project with Garner 1 through 6 up to 1.1 million square feet. So we are pleased to have that partnership and that available product coming online in town. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer. Any questions anyone may have?
Yes. Any questions from council?
No questions.
Just a question for sort of future information on the sort of occupancy of our industrial influx space throughout Garner would be kind of interesting to see it trending. I know when I drive, you drive on 40 or 85, you see a lot of empty space. Now, it's kind of shifted down and the markets changed. So, curious to how we're withstanding sort of a shift in that space market would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, and happy to pull that report for you. And didn't want to miss the chance to remind council that we're working on scheduling the economic development tours with you. So if you have not requested a date, be sure to reach out to me. We're working on getting those dates set where we can tour you around and show you all the product that I tell you about in council meetings and work sessions. But that way, you can kind of see firsthand what we're talking about. So let me know if you want to participate in one of those tours.
Okay. Other questions from council? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton? Mr. Matthews?
Yes, quite similar to what Mr. Dellinger said. I was driving through that Highway 70 corridor today, and there's, everything new coming and they're leasing. I'd be curious to know, what's the total amount of leased space that's available? And how much has already been leased? Or what's their game plan on trying to do that? And then, on the request for information, 39 received, submitted two. What are we encountering that, when county sends its stuff down to us? What's happening? Is there a disconnect? Were we not getting more of this business? Or what's the deal? Because if you get 39, we only send two back. I guess my question is, what's the issue that maybe we're having here?
Yeah, no, sir. So, yeah, happy to clear up that confusion. So, we receive every single lead that Wake County receives from the state. So Wake County does not self-select for us. They send us everything that Knightdale, Wendell, Apex, Holly Springs, all the other municipalities get. The reason why we were only able to submit two responses to those 39 is we did not have the available real estate that the client was looking for to be able to respond positively for. So it wasn't because we didn't want to, it was strictly because we couldn't. We did not have the available product for the specific parameters that the client was looking for. So, for example, I got one today, right off the bat, they need 250,000 square foot existing building today. We don't have that. So that would go in this response of one that we've received, but one that we're not able to respond to.
What about the real estate deal? What are they looking for in real estate?
So it varies. I'm happy to kind of give you a little bit more of this data broken out by a project, because every lead is totally different. So, traditionally, we've seen a lot of asking for large tracts of land, so I would say 50 acres and above. And then traditionally, as it relates to existing buildings, I would say the kind of sweet spot is between 100,000 and 200,000 square feet of existing space that's available now, that we just don't have. That's why we're so happy that with the project on Wilmington Road and then Garner 6 coming online, that'll be property that we'll be able to market.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. You know, kind of just on the topic of sort of investing for the future, I think it might be helpful to do a presentation for council, depending on the nature of the information, maybe in closed session, depending on the nature of it, on sort of infrastructure limitations of our geography. And I think there's sort of a constant reevaluation of what some of our infrastructure limitations are and where we might need to make some other types of investment. We seem to invest a lot in roads and improvements and these large items, but there may be some other infrastructure improvements that could open up parts of the town. That might be a good topic to cover, because we can keep growing, but we can't grow faster than we have the infrastructure for.
Absolutely. And that's why we are excited that we are participating. I know I mentioned at an update earlier, we're participating in a pilot program with Wake County Economic Development to really understand better where those infrastructure gaps are, so that specifically as a town and the county, we can grow to those areas to make sure that the areas that are growing have the infrastructure that you have to have to be able to have those sites available. So I'll be sure to report back on that. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent suggestion. Thank you. We'll go on the tour, and then we'll get the follow-up that we're speaking of there.
Sure.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If there aren't any questions, Mr. Bruber, thank you so much for that report. Always good to hear about all the great things that are happening in the world of economic development. So, our final report this evening is our Development Services Statistics. And I'm going to ask Assistant Manager Hodges if he'll provide an update.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. So council, you have this report in your packet. It's a little different format this time. We're working to try to stagger some of your quarterly reports or regular recurring reports so that all of them don't fall on the same meeting night of a quarter. And so this time, you're going to see statistics for Development Services Statistics for January through April. So it's a four-month window. We're working on a new schedule for these, and we'll be working on a format that's appropriate for them, much like the new format that you saw that Mr. Bruber rolled out tonight for economic development updates. But I think the important part for these numbers is really the numbers. And so if you see in your report there, the new permits issued for that four-month period totaled 1,224, with 390 of those being single-family, and 163 townhomes. A total of 374 COs issued. The number of inspections, this is always a staggering number to me. 16,067 inspections completed in a four-month window. And then you see some other statistics, co-compliance cases, 242. Temporary signs removed, 635. We have a new resource helping us with signs. Some, one of the type things we hadn't always been able to have folks available to do in that new resource is hitting the ground running and collecting lots of signs. And then 353 fire inspections. And then we have been asked by council to estimate sort of monthly projections looking forward. Based on these numbers, we think that monthly for the next reporting period, we'd see about 115 single-family permits, 95 COs, and about 4,000 inspections per month. So, again, it's pretty overwhelming numbers. Some of our team members are here tonight. Engineering and inspections are both represented here. If there's any questions about these statistics, we'll be glad to answer them for you. But just really want to thank the team, all the team members who are doing an exceptional job of managing all of these growth statistics that are causing us to be one of the top 10 in the country. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are the top 10 causing us to generate this level of activity?
Yes, sir.
It's really a lot going on, to put it mildly. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, I meant to go get it this while ago, if it falls under economic development or what have you. I'm getting a lot of questions on the veterans' hospital clinic out here. Do we have a defined date of opening? It looks like they've cleaned it up, everything's ready. Can somebody talk to me about that?
Mr. Hodges, do you have any updates? I know they were targeting this spring.
They were targeting spring. The last time we met with them, they just moved that to generally summer of this year. But we have not had a follow-up with them about a potential opening date. We did have inspections issued, a CO for them to be able to come in and do some of their outfit for some of their imaging equipment. They're still working on that, but we've not had an update from them recently, unless Mr. Paget has one more recently than I'm aware of, about potential opening. But he can probably update us on the work that's being done there.
So, we don't have a date on the opening. Early spring, we gave them a TCO where they could start getting in and having some of their folks in there to do finishing work. They just put in a request this afternoon for all of our final inspections to start tomorrow. So that's engineering final, planning final, all of our trade finals going through all three of the buildings out there. So we're, I would say, probably by the end of the month, they'll have their true CO in hand.
I heard scuttle from different sources that they're looking at opening in June. I just want to see how close we are to that, because I don't put something out there that's not factual. But it sounded like you kind of honed in on that.
Yeah. And I think what slowed it down is their late fall, they pulled their imaging rooms out and had that moved over to a separate permit. We're doing rough ends on those areas now, so it should be closing out pretty close to after they get their CO as well.
But, thank you, Mr. Paget. I would say, Mr. Matthews, though, that even though we project that kind of close-out time, the VA has not provided a date for opening. So, we've requested an update on the date. As soon as we get one, we'll be sharing it with council.
Okay. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Hodges, for the Development Services Statistics report. Council, those are all the reports that we have this evening for you. Happy to answer any additional questions the council may have.
There's a question in the Development Services report. I think, what is the goal on the visualization of the data? I think before, we've had charts and graphs, and I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm thinking, there's a spreadsheet you could plug in every month, and the chart would do itself. I mean, where are we going? Because we've seen, seems to be our aggression towards what we've seen before.
Yes, sir. So we're looking at bringing that format with the charts and graphs back. We just ran into some timing things and trying to move that around. So we wanted to get you the data this time, and we'll be going back to a format probably similar to what you've seen before with the charts and graphs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, a picture is worth a thousand words.
Yes, and numbers.
Not mentioning numbers, but it pictures the numbers even better.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for our town manager on this part? Okay, hearing done, we'll move along to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to make the introduction of Navea Haddock, our summer legal intern. Unfortunately, she had a prior commitment and had to leave shortly after 7:00. But she did say she's excited to attend other council meetings as the summer goes on. She will be with us more or less full-time, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. She is taking a class during her lunch hour, so she'll be very busy. But she spent last summer interning with the UNC School of Government. She's currently enrolled in law school with UNC. She's just having completed her second year. But she is from the Raleigh region, born and raised, happy to be here, and has hit the ground running since she began yesterday morning.
Excellent.
So for those of you who didn't have the opportunity to meet her earlier, you know, please stop by. And she will be at future meetings as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And that maybe gives you a little assistance?
Yes.
Good.
I'm very grateful for that.
Yes, indeed. It's about time. And nothing else there. So, let's go to council reports again, other than committee reports. And let's start with, Mr. Vance, any council member reports?
Not this evening.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I have a question. If someone could refresh me on our repeat offender policy when it comes to mowing grass and, I'm sorry, allergies. There are several properties along Garner Road, the grass is very high. And not recently, but in the past, snakes have been seen coming out of the grass, and it's a little scary. So what is the repeat offender position?
So, the way the ordinance is written is they have to receive three notifications within a year. And then it puts them on the chronic violator list for the following year, which means we just abate it. But for, if they're not on that chronic violator list, we have to continue to send notices. Leo and Nathan have been extremely busy with tall grass. We're averaging 40 to 50 letters going out every day, so.
All right, well, good to know. Then I can pass that on to the people who live there.
And if you've got them, if you just, you know, either put them in the Garner Info or get them to us, we'll make sure we're there.
Okay. Next question, this is a smart aleck question. How do you get the people who complain to you to put it on Garner Info?
We just.
They want me to snap my fingers and make it happen, but they don't want it. Thank you. Okay. And one other thing, I will be out of town next week, will not be at the work session. I can attend remotely if I'm needed. I'll be available for that, but I will be not in town.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger, did we skip something?
Yes, I'd written it down and forgotten to look at it. Two questions, actually ironically related to trees, imagine that. I'd heard anecdotally from two different people within a week about two different Pulte projects, the Cambria Project and the 401 Exchange, where they had breached their, the tree protection area and taken down trees and buffers or something. I don't have firsthand knowledge of how accurate it is. But one was over there near Wind Road, and then happened previously over at 401 Exchange. There was somebody telling. There was this, somebody told me that Pulte had knocked down more trees than they were supposed to and had to replant. Can we get some information on that and whether we know that's happened and if it continues to be a problem with a particular builder?
Yes, sir. I can confirm that there was a situation at the Cambria Project that this near Wind Road where the buffer was was breached. They have been, stop work order was issued on doing that. They have been, they have been given information about what has to be replanted and there will also be a fine for the violation. I can't confirm the 401 one. I'll check on that.
If you could check the 401, that is, that is a lot of mistakes from a major home builder to be making consistently. And it'd be a shame if their disposition was to take a fine and just replant trees versus actually sticking to what was in our development ordinance. So, if we could look into that, that would be great. The other is, we've seen the timber, Timber Drive, Vandoor Springs, the timber permit, I guess, for that project over there. And there's one that it happened, I guess catty-corner to that, across from the fire station. Are we seeing an uptick in timber permits in the town limits? Anybody know? It seems very strange. We got this kind of urban harvesting going on.
I'm not aware of an uptick. I do know those are two sort of unique situations. One, the original one across from the fire station was for someone who's planning to build a single-family home. And we are working with them to make sure they keep the site in a reasonable manner. The other one is a property owner that's recently purchased the property. They're planning to build something within the current zoning and they have not yet submitted a site plan, but they did go through the proper channels to get a timbering permit to ensure that the buffers were not violated. So, I think very different circumstances, even though they're the same intersection. And in both cases, worked with staff, one with some assistance part of the way through the job and the most current one with the proper, the proper permitting and questions asked.
And the buffer that currently exists on the latest one, is that the buffer that would need to be maintained or actually it's a little bit bigger than the?
I can't answer if it's exactly going to be maintained that way, but I know that they were staying within what would be allowed just for timbering. So, my my guess is it will probably see something that would get not, not leave quite that much remaining, but I wouldn't want to answer you fully without a site plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for your for your good eye on that unusual property across from the fire station there. It was cleared and they seem to have turned the trees into boards and lumber and that was good. But now they brought more logs in there, like it's a little sawmill or something. It's very, very confusing. But thanks for pointing that out and, John, thank you and your team for looking into that. It's not an industrial zone area, indeed. Thank you. Let's see, where were we? We finished up there. We're going through council reports and you, did we finish, Ms. Behringer?
Yes.
Did you finish? We go down here, Mr. Singleton, I have a council member comments or?
Yes, two reasons. Again, I'm sorry I missed the budget meeting last week on Thursday. I will email some more questions to staff and copy the council members' regards to the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Just closing on one thing, we had the heroes breakfast a little over a week ago in Garner, at our favorite place out there. And a great turnout, it's probably one of the best ones we've had. And of course, we had our Garner policeman, as well as a former fire chief recognized and and plus the pals. And it was just a great turnout from countywide. And so, I was glad we could host it and that's a big event every year. This year, it was really, it was bigger, I think. So, it turned out well.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That deserves special attention. This was a solely volunteer effort put together by community members. It's been going on roughly 10 years or something.
Something about like that. Lots of sponsors throughout.
And and the volunteers go to businesses to be sponsors and they ended up, after paying for all of that stuff, they they still donated over $15,000 to local law enforcement-related charities. So, it's a, it's a big deal. That's Garner at its best, that's volunteers at its best. There was no government involved in, except that many of the people being honored were government employees, fire first responders, the 911 center. It was, it was a great event. If you ever get a chance, I encourage you to go. So, it was a great thing. Okay, and that gets us around to, it's almost time to talk about adjourning. But before we do, I have to flip back to the Charlotte region trip. I've traveled a lot on train in my life. I've traveled a lot by railroad, but that was the first time I was on a train that hit a tree. And that was just great. And I got to see the whole thing, like an explosion of wood coming up. And we only had to sit there about 30 minutes to get the train, the tree out, murdered a train. But how often does a train hit a tree? Obviously, the tree was in the wrong because we were on the track. So, you never know what you see on these trips. If there's no other business or tall tales to the exchange here, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Second.
There's a move in a second. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.